Okay, it says webinar is being recorded, so. Okay, so you want me to start now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I am going to a call to order the meeting. This is the July 12th, 2022 special meeting of the City of San Diego Commission on Police Practices. And if I can call our interim executive director Charmaine Mosley to call the role.
First vice chair case.
Present.
Commission Anderson. You frozen? Why am I frozen?
It looks like Patrick may be frozen.
Commissioner.
Okay, I think I'm back. I froze for some reason. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Commission Harrington.
Present.
Commissioner Smith. Andrea.
She's not here.
I'm present. I apologize. I heard dent, but if it's Albert Griffin, I'm here.
I'm Marky, but I was calling for Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Clark. He's not here yet. Commissioner Vaughn.
Present.
Commissioner David Griffin is present. Commissioner Bruce.
Present.
Commissioner Pink.
Here.
That completes roll call. You can proceed.
Okay, let me announce who else is present. So looking at the attendees list, I already mentioned that our executive director Charmaine Mosley is present. We have Robin Resendez, who is our complaints coordinator, staff member. We have our outside counsel Dwayne Bennett, present. We have Liz Barat from the City of San Diego Human Relations Department. And I think that's it in terms of staff. And then we have nine members of the public who are attending his participants. Okay, and now if you can go ahead and put up the agenda. And so tonight's meeting is a special meeting where we are discussing one topic, and so there will not be a public comment and other topics, and I'll call on the public at the appropriate time. The meeting topic tonight is bifurcation of the commission's deputy executive director position. So the recruitment for a community engagement coordinator position and a deputy executive director position for the office of and a deputy executive director position for the office of the Commission on Police Practices. If you can scroll down a little bit so I can explain the process. Okay, we're okay, we're going to begin with a momentarily with the presentation by me and then followed by our executive director. And then we will have an opportunity for members of the public to speak, and they will each have each of them who desire to speak will have two minutes. We would ask that they avoid to the repossible being repetitive. And I also agreed that I would call on the members of the community panel for the selection for the selection process together. So I will do those and then call on other members of the of the public. And then we will have discussion and the discussion will be limited to to commissioners, although commissioners can ask any questions that they wish of the of the staff or of the or of the subcommittee. I would caution all participants that we are in the midst of a hiring process, and that is the topic for the discussion tonight, and that process is currently ongoing. And so it would not be appropriate to discuss any of the applicants for that position or to make any other comments that are specific to the to the applicants. And then we will conduct a vote prior to conducting the vote, I will explain what the consequences of a yes vote and a no vote are, and that is our only item on the agenda tonight. We will adjourn after that. And attached to the agenda are two things. The recruitment brochure that was put together by our executive search firm and the job description for the assistant executive director. And I might mention that the job description used the term assistant executive director, but we changed that subsequently to be the deputy 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 executive director to be consistent with the terminology that the the city uses. So let me begin by giving a little bit of an overview of where we are and how we got to where we are. When the commission was first established, we put together a transition ad hoc, a transition planning committee that I chair. And we have many tasks, including the budget and so forth, but one of our major.
Listening to Doug because he always like when he talks.
Andrea, you are not muted. Andrea, you're not muted.
Okay. So now I lost my train of thought. And so we were one of our first responsibilities was to develop a staffing plan for the new commission. And together we proposed and the commission agreed upon. I think the initial staff is 11, and so it consisted of the executive director, our general counsel, a supervising investigator, three additional investigators, a policy analyst, a performance auditor, a complaints coordinator, an executive assistant, and a community coordinator, and then subsequently in subsequent years after it was approved by the city council, a mediation coordinator. So those are the positions that we proposed and were in our in our initial budget. This year, we added an additional position for the budget that was just approved by the city council and went into effect on July 1st, and that was for a budget and finance analyst position. So we would be splitting the job that our complaints coordinator currently does, because that was initially combined into into one job. We decided early in the process that it was important to have a full-time complaints coordinator. And also decided that should be one of our first hires because of the importance of that position to the to the work of the commission. Our immediate hires, whoever were to get an executive assistant and our complaints coordinator, because at the time our only employee was Charmaine Mosley, who was doing her job plus those other two jobs, plus the finance analyst job. And so our first two hires were the executive assistant and the complaints coordinator. In the process of completing the staffing, we had to go to the city's civil service commission for those positions that are managerial and exempt from the civil service. And in the process of discussions with the city regarding job descriptions and the processes and salaries and so forth, the city's HR director pointed out that the city has a provision for each department to have a deputy executive director, and it's not required to go to the civil civil service commission for that position because it is automatically given to each department. And then upon upon learning that we had a discussion and we came to a agreement as a as a committee that it made sense to make the community coordinator position, the deputy executive director position, because they would help elevate the importance of that position. Among other reasons, and so we decided to to do that. Next, we decided that because of the importance of that position and some other of our executive managerial positions, we would it would be beneficial to utilize the services of an executive search firm, because among other reasons, we didn't have the staff to do all of the work that's required in doing that type, that level of the search. And so initially, we were going to contract out for a executive search firm, but the city contracted out with for an executive search firm to do a variety of searches, and we were able to piggyback on on that. And so we were able to use CPS HR consulting to help us with the current the search for the deputy executive director. And our process was going to be several steps. The first step obviously was the recruitment period. So we developed a brochure and publicized the brochure in various different places. And then the applicants were reviewed by our executive search firm. And they presented a list of what they perceived to be the top applicants. They had an A list and a B list. The second step of the process was to have a community panel who would interview the actually me going back a step, we would we would then have a subcommittee which would then select approximately seven candidates who would be who would be interviewed by a community panel. We selected the organizations and allowed the organizations to select their own member of the panel, and they all signed confidentiality agreements. The next step of the process was that there would be a committee, which was initially going to be the cabinet, but it was modified slightly to include myself and Patrick Anderson, who was our community outreach chair. Diana Dent, a member of the transition committee and Katie Evan Daddy, who is serving as a non non-voting ex-official member on our transition committee. She is with Women Occupy and is our liaison with the San Diegans for Justice. And so we asked her to be part of that committee, and the role of that committee would be to take the feedback from the community panel, conduct their own interviews of the candidates and to recommend approximately three candidates to the executive director, who would do the final interview and make the make the decision. And the executive director indicated that she was interested in having a couple of other individuals, perhaps city staff, perhaps some other people join her in that process. So that was what the process was, and we received a 79 applications. Those were screened by CPS consulting, and they presented us with, like I said, an A list and a B list. Those are reviewed by the screening committee. We asked him to David Nymeier, who was the consultant, to look at some additional people and give us some additional people to choose from. And after a couple of meetings, the committee came to a consensus on seven individuals, which we wanted to move forward to be interviewed by the by the community panel. We looked at we didn't use a scoring system, but we came to a consensus. We looked at each of the candidates in terms of the level of a community engagement they had, especially with a diverse communities. We looked at their level of managerial experience and supervisory experience. And we also looked at their experience either with civilian oversight or similar types of social justice types of activities. After those seven individuals were selected, and the names were shared with the executive director, she contacted me and expressed concern. And suggested first that we perhaps restart the search and make the require or make it a requirement that applicants for the position have five years of managerial experience. Currently, if you look at the brochure, which was attached to the agenda, it's included as something that the ideal candidate would have, but it is a preferred, not a required qualification. And then subsequently, she recommended that we call the search and felt that we should actually change the position, the two positions, as she felt that the community engagement skill set and the managerial skill set were two separate skill sets, and that it was we were unlikely to find an individual who excelled in both and recommended that we consider splitting the position into two separate positions. And so she made the decision to pause the process for us to reassess, and we called the meeting was it last Friday of the subcommittee to reassess and decide where we go from here. We had four members on the subcommittee and we weren't able unable to come to a consensus. There were two of us on the subcommittee, myself and Patrick, who felt that we should continue the search and allow the community panel to interview the candidates and then assess the strength of the pool at that point in time. And then there were two members of the committee who were Nancy and Diana, who thought that we should stop the process and bifurcate the position into two positions and start the process over again with interviewing for those two separate positions. And I think that covers everything. If not, you can ask it during the question or an answer, but I'll now turn it over to a Charmaine, because she's the one who made the proposal. And you're muted, Charmaine.
I need to keep myself muted. And so good evening, everyone. As the interim executive director of the Office of the Commission on Police Practices, it is my responsibility in this position to make sure that the recruitment and hiring process is a fair one. I you know, in my background with the wealth of experience and oversight, leadership and management, I also have participated on many, many interview panels to select the right staff for oversight boards and now this commission. I gained this experience from state government, law school, local government. In the hiring process, it is my responsibility to make sure that we hire the best candidate for the position. So I know we all might have the same goal to build up this commission. However, as the as one of the internal staff, whose main responsibility is managing the day-to-day operations of this commission, that not many of the external community members know exactly what's going on within the department itself. So it is a difficult job. And yes, as our first vice chair case mentioned, the commission agreed to go ahead and to fill the community, I mean, the the executive director position as well as the admin aid position. Those were two positions that the CRB had previously, and they were eliminated in 2020. So with that said, there was, you know, I assumed the workload of both those positions. And the commission agreed to go ahead and add those positions back to the commission. Two years ago, and this is something that first vice chair Doug Case mentioned. When we first agreed to create the community engagement coordinator position, at that time, we noticed an increased need to have someone in a role that would serve as the facilitator of community meetings and educate the public about the commission, especially as it relates to updates on what's happening with the commission. It's important because, you know, as you know, sometimes, you know, people don't really know about this commission until there's an incident with, you know, with an officer, and then they want to file a complaint. So that's important, as well as keeping people into the loop as to what's happening within the commission, implementation ordinance. You know, staffing needs and things like that. So with that said, you know, the for for the role of the community engagement coordinator position, those other tasks that the person was going to be responsible for as well. The position is an unclassified salary position. It is a coordinated position. It is also considered a program coordinated position within the sitting. So at the same time, this position was being created, the personnel department informed me that the Office of the Commission on Police Practices did have an assistant executive director. We refer to that position as a deputy executive director because that assistant executive director position didn't exist within the city. So since we did not have enough money in the budget for an assistant ED, and I definitely was struggling in my position and trying to get things done. I suggested that we combine the community engagement position with the DEED position, which is the deputy executive director position. And at the time, the commission agreed. So we start off with the community engagement position in the beginning. The DEED position is an unclassified salary program manager position. That's how it was created. And then we we combine those two positions into one. So I'm going to fast forward into this year. So back in April, after a couple of the transitioning committee meetings, I realized that the community engagement position and the DEED position had two different skill sets, which explained why the committee felt strongly about certain language in the job description, and I felt strongly about the opposite. Things that were like head button. And at that time, what I did was I mentioned it to some of the the members of the subcommittee and transition committing that the reason that we were having these these difficult conversations was because it was two different skill sets. I was looking for something in the deputy executive director. And the commission was looking and, you know, for the community engagement coordinator. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that. You know, I was expressing and mentioning my concerns at the beginning of the process when I realized that the two skill sets were going up against each other. I also, and first first vice chair Doug Case did mention this, I did express my concern as to the quality of candidates in the application pool. I mentioned my concerns to the executive search firm as well. And yes, he sent us some more names, and the committee was able to pick one person out of the additional names that he sent to us. I wanted to also mention that I was also not allowed to participate in the selection process, which is dissent because at the end of the process, as the appointing authority for the city, I could be responsible for making the choice of who's to hire. So in my mind, I struggled with the process because normally the hiring person is involved in the process or the individuals who are doing the interviews, they are part of the internal operations of the organization. So they would have internal knowledge as to the day-to-day operations and things like that. So to see if the committee was internal internal staff, I could see also that if they were internal staff and they were making that selection to move candidates forward, yes, that would be fine. However, this is not the case. Since I was excluded from the beginning of the of the selection process, I believe that it is a disservice to the selection pool and the process. I am okay with not being a participant in the committee interviews. But the discussion regarding the candidates is an important part of the process. And I'm not going to mention, you know, during my 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 comment right now about the candidates, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the discussion as we are going through these applicants are very important. I might have knowledge that the the subcommittee that's looking at the applicants might have. And I was excluded from that process, and it seemed to me like being able to look in, and I got drinking some water, my mouth is getting dry. Sorry. The process to me seemed, it wasn't inclusive, and it seemed divided at some point. And I know it's difficult because we all want the same outcome. We all want the best for this commission. You know, even though I am a city employee and I'm the interim ED, I have been here since 2015, and I've seen the CRB grow. I've seen the commission as we are trying to build it up. There were so many different things and you know, day-to-day operations, administrative needs and support that's needed that we need to be able to make the right decision as we're moving forward. So I want to explain why I decided to pull the process and why I made this recommendation to bifurcate the position to the commission. So after reviewing all of the candidates submitted by the search firm, I did inform first vice chair case that the process should be paused, reassessed, and bifurcate the deputy executive director position into two positions. The decision to pause the process, reassess, and bifurcate the position was not done in a vacuum. I believe that we received a mixed bag of candidates in the original pool. The commission's positions are all important in my eyes. You know, it's all important positions. And we need to do everything to make sure that we get it right. I know that people are constantly moving between jobs and nothing is permanent. We do have an opportunity when we know that results of the the review of the applicants was not let's say there wasn't just like one person that met all of the qualifications, most of the qualifications were on both ends. And then there was some other issues, but I I'm not going to go into that now because, you know, it's personnel. So we have an opportunity to look at and tighten up the process, also fix the brochure for the deputy executive director position by including the five-year administrative managerial supervisory experience that was in the job description and tighten up language in the brochure so that reflects a seasoned executive for the deputy executive director. That's in the brochure. The commission is looking for seasoned executives, right? So we got to make sure that that those qualifications are in there. And they weren't. This is not an uncommon practice to pause a process. It's uncommon common practice. So if the position was split, I believe that we have candidates who might be considered for the community engagement position. And, you know, based on my experience, bifurcating the position would give some candidates an opportunity to be considered for this position for the community engagement position. The salary is still decent at 90,000. And as for the base salary, I know that last night's meeting, it was mentioned it was 50 something thousand, but that was incorrect. With fringe benefits, it would be possibly approximately 110. I do not want to set anyone up for failure by moving candidates forward in a position as it is now. When we are looking for specific qualities listed in the brochure for a seasoned executive with different qualities. So this commission is highly visible. The community has been engaged. You know, and involved in the process. Yes, we do have a community panel that's involved with the process. You know, we are still in a transition phase. So it's important that we, along with community feedback, select the right candidate. At the end of the process, I still have to make the final decision. And I really don't want to feel like it's a setup, honestly. I really don't like that feeling. And, you know, so what I decided to do is I did decide to to have a panel for myself so that any of my biases or, you know, we will be we'll be able to have a fair hiring practice in place. So that's a decision that I made, and I want to make sure that I'm transparent. Um, so that's a decision that I made and I want to make sure that I'm transparent and I'm being fair and I'm being honest, you know, that's, that's important. I want to also make sure that we get this right. All of the commission's positions are elevated, they're highly visible and important. I told this to our, um, administrative aide, you know, and I'm like trying to mentor and advise them and train them as well as the, um, executive assistant. And they have a voice too in this process, you know, just because your, you know, your title is administrative aide does not mean that you don't have anything to share. Um, we should also keep in mind that there is room for growth in the commission as well as in the city. People move around, they move around all the time. So it is my job to make sure that we continue to move this commission forward with a staff that is diverse and experienced while being inclusive of community feedback. We are building a whole entire department to be sustainable from the bottom up, which may take different resources. So it will only be beneficial to all of us to be flexible with our decisions as we are moving forward. There might be some tweaks we might have down the line to different things. Um, this is the first time being here, we have included the community in the hiring process. Um, let me just also add that, you know, things change all the time. I'm learning things every day within the city. And it's, it is a lot, you know, so this is my experience. Um, this field includes community engagement and management. I recommend then that the commission consider the approval of my recommendation to bifurcate the deputy executive director position into the community engagement coordinator position and the deputy executive director position. So with that, that completes my spiel.
And I realized I forgot to mention something that I had in my notes, uh, which was a question that is raised in the chat. And that is the budget. The budget process of, you know, just completed as I indicated. Um, there is flexibility, however, in hiring, uh, personnel. Uh, and so usually what the city does is you have to adhere to your personnel budget. Uh, but if you can move things around and, uh, within your personnel budget, uh, you have the flexibility of doing that. And we have, you know, some positions that, uh, where we will have salary savings because we are not hiring them. At the time that I, you know, our, our budget was somewhat ideal in terms of we were planning on hiring them. And so, um, yes, it would be possible to, uh, to come up with the money, uh, for a bifurcated position, but we would have to then add that additional money into next year's budget because our base budget is based on the positions that I indicated. So you would have to, uh, request the city council to allocate enough money to add that additional, uh, additional position. And then, um, it wasn't mentioned, uh, but it was mentioned in the, in the text to me that the plan would be that if we were to bifurcate it, that our first hire would be the community coordinator. And then, uh, we would, uh, subsequently hire the deputy executive director. And when that, what the sequence of the additional hires, uh, after the community coordinator, I think would be subject to a discussion at the, uh, transition, the planning committee to, to, because we have several other, uh, critical positions as well. But do want to make it clear that the, uh, commitment is that the regard, that if there, if it is bifurcated, uh, that the, uh, the first hire would be the, uh, community engagement coordinator. And so I think at this point, we will go to, uh, public comments, somebody asked a question and unfortunately I don't have a, uh, screen timer unless somebody else does. Um, so I can keep track on my watch and when somebody has about twenty seconds left, I will, uh, try to gently interrupt them and let them know how much time they have, they have left. And so, um, if you are, and, uh, attend date, let me do it this way, since I made a commitment that I would let all of the, uh, individuals who were on the, um, community, uh, interviewing panel, uh, to go as a group. If you are a member of the, uh, community, uh, uh, community panel and you would wish to speak for two minutes, uh, please raise your hand and then I will call on you. And so I see, uh, okay, names keep going on and off, but I see Andrea Saint Julian and Shane Haug. Hopefully I've pronounced that correctly. Is there anybody else from the community panel who wishes to speak? Go, Evy. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we will start with those three individuals and we'll start with Andrea Saint Julian. So if you could unmute her.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Saint Julian, co-chair of San Diegans for Justice, and I am a part of the community hiring panel for this position. I, uh, feel very strongly, as does the entire community panel, that this, um, position should not be split into two positions and that the hiring process should, uh, continue as it has, um, uh, been scheduled. I would first like to take extreme exception to the comments, um, that were made to the effect that, um, uh, all of the, and all of the seventy-nine individuals who applied for this position, that not a single one is competent to even move on to the next stage. Um, uh, I, I am shocked by that statement and I hope uh, all of the seventy-nine people who applied for this position would be equally shocked. There is not a job of any importance that I am aware of that doesn't have multiple skillsets. And in fact, Charmaine is required to have both administrative skills as well as community skills. In fact, I would shudder to think that this commission would even consider hiring an executive director who doesn't have community skills. Can you imagine having an, a, an interim, a, a, a deputy ED who doesn't have community skills? That would be disastrous. Um, uh, I, I think it's very unfair since we can't talk about any of the individuals who have passed on to the second stage, that we can't fully combat what to me is a completely erroneous assertion that
Twenty seconds.
That there are no individuals who are qualified to take this position. Um, and I also think it's, uh, fiscally irresponsible to, um, split the positions at this point. That could always be done at a later point if something, uh, um, happens and, uh, something else needs to be done. Uh, I'm very strongly against, uh, splitting these positions.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Shane, uh, Haug. Is it Haug or Haig? You can correct me. So if you can go ahead and, uh, unmute Shane and go ahead, Shane.
I believe I'm unmuted, am I? Is that correct?
You are, go ahead.
Uh, the bifurcation concept that is the sole issue here is based upon, uh, what has been repeatedly, uh, discussed as skillsets. Now, this is a brand new organization in a brand new environment. I know there are a lot of these organizations around, there's a lot of work that's been done under the prior board. But we really, really don't know how that operation is going to be in this city. To lock ourselves into a set of quote, "skillsets" and quote, "at this time", and to build an organization based upon those ignores what we really need is a handle on how it works in the longer run. How is it really going to operate? So we're presuming that these skillsets are the things that are going to be perfect for the organization. We really don't know. So we shouldn't be splitting up a, a, and bifurcating a job when we're still in this area of uncertainty. Secondly, and this is most important, we're building a top-heavy organization that is clumsy, not agile, not capable of carrying out the job quickly. You're creating roadblocks to the operation of the public, the public members to do what they are going to be called upon to do. So you need one executive director, a deputy is fine if that's the workload requirement, but it should be limited there simply from the, the, this, nothing else than the, the point of, uh, point of view of a, an effective, capable, agile, responsive organization. So I, uh, hope that you understand I am dead set against number one, splitting everything and dragging this out. And that's the last point. If we do this, this whole process just gets delayed and that which was called upon by the public is not going to occur in due course. Thank you.
Okay, and that was exactly two minutes, so thank you. And, uh, Evy Costifer, who also is a member of the community panel, if you can unmute her and allow her to speak. She's muted. Evy, you need to unmute yourself now.
Everything.
Here we go, thank you.
Want to start again? I'm sorry. I should say that. Um, yeah, I want to reiterate that, um, all of us who were there at the meeting, which was eight out of the nine, really felt the process needs to continue. This new group is very heavy on process and that's because the community is supposed to be heavily involved in all decisions. And suddenly, when we're ready to go ahead and look at the seven people, we didn't get even a chance to, to see that. One person had decided, oh, they're not appropriate. Uh, I think that the community needs to be trusted to come up with that kind of decision from those, um, from those seven. It's, it's important to recognize that everything so far has been pushing this thing further and further time-wise. And here is another example. If you want to have the heavy load on this person be community, then we can look at that in this way and have it start out that way and worry the next time around whether that works or not. But to stop the process, and I was so pleased that we were getting this process. This is a very important part of this new group. And if the people who've been on it before feel that that's not so very important, I'm very surprised and upset that they're still involved in making decisions because we have gotten this far, which is, I think, laudable that we have representatives from important groups of this community and they will be happy and feel good about having seen that the community involvement has been carried through. So I think that is a major issue. I think we should continue with it. I have been able to look at only some of them because they came only today. I was with my ninety-six-year-old sister on her birthday today.
So twenty seconds.
Yeah, okay, so, um, what I can say from the few I looked at, they're quite fascinating. I want to ask some of those few people, I saw a couple of questions and I'd like to finish and read the rest and go on with the process. That is what I am recommending. Thank you.
Okay, um, next, uh, we have, uh, I think those are all the community panel members, have their hands raised. Andrea, your hand is raised again, is that because you didn't lower it or? Oh, okay, and, um, Patrick, is Nick S. a member of the committee? Okay, then we will go on next then with, uh, Kate Yevindetti.
Uh, hello, um, as you know, I'm a representative of Women Occupy San Diego and I sit on the transition committee, uh, representing San Diegans for Justice. And, uh, in all the committee meetings that I've been to, I never heard this issue raised. So maybe it was raised with other people. But I, I want to talk about four concerns I have with this issue. One is process, one is timing, one is the appearance and transparency and the necessity. Um, and I think, uh, Evy spoke to process. We have been in this process and dealing with this for many months. It's, a lot of time has been put into it. This, it was never raised about this whole separate skillset issue. And frankly, I think it's, um, not a valid, uh, issue. I think it's people who, there are a large number of people who would be able to fit both of these categories. And I believe that, I wasn't involved in any of the screening, but I believe that the seven that have come down to the final screening have gone through a substantial process. I trust in the process and the people who were involved in it. And I'm sure that all of the people that will be looked at are people who would fit well within both categories. What I actually heard frankly is that Charmaine doesn't like the seven candidates. And I'm sorry about that. But, um, uh, these are candidates that have gone through a substantial process. A lot of people applied, a lot of people were screened out. Um, I personally know people who applied who I thought would be good, who were screened out. Um, and I have confidence that these seven candidates can fit both categories. I am concerned, uh, about the appearance at this point of, um, of saying we have to start all over again because we think we made a mistake in not making this into two categories. Once it got down to this process and once there were seven people who, um, are known to, you know, some people, um, who did the screening. And I, I think that's a slap in the face to all of the applicants and to the community.
Twenty seconds.
Okay, and I guess just lastly, I would say, remember that we are interested in transparency, we're interested in, uh, community um, involvement. And if, if this goes back and is bifurcated and it's, you know, people are concerned about the time, it is an issue. Um, I think that the community is gonna, is gonna lose even more trust. There's already a problem with the time that's taken so long that has nothing to do with the current CPP. But this will be a major issue. And I think the, the commission needs to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Nick S. with your hand raised. Do you want to introduce yourself and we can? Oh, yes, so if you can unmute him and allow him to speak. He's muted. So Robin, did you send him the unmute link? Okay, so, Nick, you need to click on the unmute link or maybe you can send it again. And if you're still muted, you can click on the mute link at the bottom of your screen. Okay, now he disappeared from my screen, so maybe he was having some technical issues. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised and so we will now move on to, uh, uh, oh, I, I see that, uh, Liz Brett, who is our, uh, who is the city's, uh, with the city's HR department, uh, has her hand raised, so I will allow her to, to speak.
Uh, thanks so much, Doug. Thanks so much, commission, um, for allowing me to attend your meeting today. Um, I just wanted to emphasize, uh, the, the roles of, from my understanding, I've been helping, um, support this recruitment effort and working with the recruiter, um, and with, uh, Charmaine and the commission on this process. And the, uh, the community engagement piece is an integral piece, obviously, an integral role. And an equally integral part is standing up a whole department that doesn't exist yet, where there's just right now Charmaine, Robin, and I think Alina, right? And a huge amount of the structure processes, um, and systems to start up a new department are huge. When they don't exist, um, starting them from scratch is no easy feat. So I just wanted to emphasize the leadership skills and the seasoned executive part, um, that's needed as part of this position. And I think that, uh, it's a little bit swayed in the community engagement side. Um, I think that, don't forget how hard it is to start up a department from scratch, um, in a huge bureaucracy. in a huge bureaucracy. So I just wanted to emphasize that with with this group. It's it's no easy feat. And if there's an opportunity to have two people, one who's highly specialized in community engagement and one who's highly specialized, who can do, you know, there's some overlap, right? You know, you can have someone who's like a Charmaine, who does know the community engagement side, who brought a lot of years of experience with her. But having someone who can do the executive leadership skills, navigating a political bureaucratic crazy place, and also someone who's highly specialized in community engagement and who can build trust, transparency and all those skills needed, I think is a is a good thing for this commission. What's the best thing for the commission ultimately, the people? Obviously, that's up to you all to decide, but maybe having two instead of one. One person can be diluted, you know, maybe they're not really good at one thing and they're better at another. Is it is kind of the the draw you might have. Anyway, that's all.
And I was looking at the chat and it looks like Nick S. Is back. And so why don't we give him one more chance to see if he can if he can connect?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Zoom was giving me some trouble. I'll keep it really fast. I appreciate it. I believe that there should be two positions. You know, outreach needs to actually be able to reach the community. If there's just one position, it's going to be unnecessarily stalled. I, you know, another thing that seems to to come up as I'm listening to the comments from some of the the people in the public here. They're saying things like they they don't know what's going on in the commission. And yet they want to sit here and stall what the commission deems to be to be worthy of of a topic, there being two different positions. It scares me that the outside groups here in San Diego, some of which have a very social social justice nature, are very emotionally how should I say that they're using their emotions to to set forth what they think should be good for this committee. Whereas people on the commission are sitting here telling us that for the betterment of the commission and the public, we would be better suited with two different positions. So I would rather listen to them, people who are actually on the position. I mean, on the commission who who work with it, work with them, who have history working with police and aren't getting paid by anti-police groups to sit here and yell at you guys for days on end. It's annoying. It's common sense. And I'm just, I'm frustrated hearing it week after week after week. These people get on here. So two positions.
Thank you. And I see that Francine Maxwell's raised her hand. So I'll allow her to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Francine Maxwell, Southeastern San Diego resident, Chairwoman of Black Men and Women United. I applaud the attempt to consider that it needs to be two people, but we understand that at the crux of it, the community, this is a community, public oversight commission, and trust is at the forefront. When you continue to throw something a Hail Mary in the twelfth hour, then the community does get suspect. And once again, we're back to where we were some years ago. As fast as we're making twelve steps forward, you want to push us back ten steps. I applaud the HR. I applaud the person that said he's annoyed, but the community is annoyed. We're annoyed at writing all these complaints that may or may not rise to the level of being fully investigated and looked at because they've had to, because they're so overworked. And recently, as of June thirtieth, we've gone down to twelve interim commissioners. We applaud those that continue to stick it out. We applaud those that go in on the weekends to IA. But make no mistake, the community has been watching everything that has been thrown to block us from moving forward for oversight for the eighth largest city for the police department. So no, it needs to continue to be one person, one strong person. And we need community input. And I want to thank the the head, the headhunter company. He was awesome. He communicated to people. Apologized, I'm sorry, you're not moving forward. If they were missing something, he made sure that they turned it in. So the due diligence was there. It was done. I don't know who the seven are. Bless them that they want to work. But let's get this going. Thank you so much, Doug.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no more hands raised in the participants, I will now close a public comment and we'll call on commissioners to to speak. And Patrick has his hand raised.
Hi, thanks. So I'm a commissioner in response to one of those comments. I'm not speaking from emotion. I'm speaking from five years and NACOL certification and spending the last two years working on this transition. I want to push back initially about a couple of things. First of all, the notion that the applicants we've seen don't excel at the multiple requirements is a false one. We're not talking about skill sets like welding and flying a fighter pilot. We're talking about having some supervisory experience and having some community engagement experience. Those are the skill sets that we're talking about. We never in our more than a year long process of putting together this staff list, we never had a separate deputy executive director that we then combined with the community engagement person. We were advised by the city that we could use that title with that position. And that's what we did. We didn't have a separate position and we smushed them together. I want to be clear about that. I've I've spent a lot of time over the last few days, both going back to the applications, which we're not going to talk about, and also looking at NACOL best practices, looking at other oversight boards to really make sure I have an understanding of what works on these boards. The the qualifications that Charmaine is asking us to consider, first of all, requiring five years of what she's calling executive experience. That is more than what NACOL recommends for the executive director position on a board. So the expectation that, to borrow Charmaine's phrase, a seasoned executive from somewhere would apply to be a deputy in a city commission doesn't make sense to me. And it's a higher bar than NACOL sets for an executive. And Charmaine, I know you want to push back, but I do need to take some time here to talk through this. Because I've, along with Doug and the other members of the Transition Committee, Diana's also been on this entire time. We've put a lot of thought into this. The notion that we need a standalone deputy executive director and keep in mind, that would mean a full time job for a deputy position. In order to build out an office and pick up all of these things that we want this commission to be able to do, forget that the budget that the mayor approved includes a staff of eleven or thirteen that we haven't been able to hire yet. That includes fiscal analyst, policy analyst, you know, a mediation coordinator, investigators with a supervisory investigator. So all of those things, and I'm the first to say that Charmaine was heroically trying to carry a year ago. We have already built the staff that we need to get on to hiring to fill those positions. And they are the ones who will be carrying all of that different work that we want to do. The last thing, before I get to like the points that I had thought about in advance tonight, the last thing I want to say is this. So I I went and looked at a lot of other oversight bodies. I looked at inspectors general. I looked at oversight boards. I looked at commissions in a bunch of other cities. And I I'm sure I didn't look at it at everything. I could not find one example of an oversight body that has a standalone, full time deputy position that isn't combined with another focus. Most of these oversight bodies don't have a deputy at all. But those that do combine that position with, I mean, I have a whole list of them. Sometimes it's combined with the chief counsel or the legal analyst. Sometimes it's combined with the fiscal analyst or the budget analyst. In New Orleans, it's a very different structure, but the deputy executive director also heads up their separate use of force review, which I think is a really good idea, by the way. We should look at that use of force model. But in every case, the person in that deputy role has another focus that they're invested in. We you know, as Charmaine described and as Doug described, we we didn't combine two positions. We put the title Deputy Executive Director with community engagement in part because of the exempt classification. In part because, and this is something no one else has talked about, it allowed us to offer a higher salary range of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The coordinator position, I think, would get it, get us up to ninety. But that's a significant difference for San Diego. And thirdly, because it made sense to us, given the state of this commission in this city at this moment, that the deputy executive director would be focused on community engagement. That would ensure that working with the community was at the center of this body. If you look at the description in the job ad, the deputy executive director portion is a paragraph at the end of the of the list of of duties. And it essentially says that this person will step up if the executive director is out sick, is absent, is on vacation, or if there's a vacancy in that role. At no point does it say that that person would then automatically become a permanent executive director. The last couple of things I want to say, first of all, the fact that this process was paused the night before the community panel began its review. So that the community members we had invited into the process and structured as a part of this process. They were just told, we're not going any further with this, essentially, never mind if this vote succeeds tonight. Is a huge problem for what we're trying to do. Again, I I have a lot of confidence in the applicants that we've put together. I wish we could share that packet with this group because I just, I think that when you look at these resumes alongside the qualifications, they don't I don't know that you would recognize what was said earlier about them. It's kind of shocking to me frankly. But you know, anything's possible with this community involved process. If after the community interviews, there's a feeling that there's no one who would work for San Diego, fair enough. Then we've arrived at a decision through the process that we set up. I really don't suspect that that's going to happen, but to have the process cut off the night before the community panel begins its work strikes me as lacking transparency and is abandoning the process. And I say this with all respect of Charmaine, who, you know, had to carry the work of community engagement herself for a long time too. But I've spent the last two years in this role, essentially working a second full time job, hoping to build trust and good faith with the community. And to interrupt the process at this moment, right bef- the night before we had our first meeting of the community panel strikes me as setting us back in that work. Finally, so I think we need to weigh in. Finally, I really think we need to clarify the budget thing because I I do think that, you know, they're using the R word and talking about the economy on the news right now. I don't think economic prospects are very positive right now. So to be very clear, the budget that we have is a bit fungible in the sense that yes, we can use some money to hire a new position. And, you know, we don't have to stick exactly to all of the positions that the the mayor had approved with the budget. But if we do that, we are mortgaging one of those other positions for a full time deputy. If we do that, we are mortgaging a policy analyst, a mediation coordinator, you know, an investigator, a supervisory investigator, a budgetary, and we are mortgaging one of those positions or one of the other things that we asked for that we will have to go back and ask for again later. We may have some extra money in the budget this year, but an FTE, a job, is a permanent position. We'd have to get that money back somehow. And I'm I'm, I don't think that's fiscally responsible, especially in this particular moment. None of the other boards and commissions, including the Ethics Commission, the other independent commission, none of them have a standalone, full time deputy. And again, I couldn't find an example. There may be one. But of all of our, you know, peer oversight commissions out there, the deputy position is always paired up with and focused on some particular part of that commission's work. And I think, given the quality of applications we received, the the depth of experience in those applications, not just with supervisory work or and not just with community engagement, but also with oversight and social justice and criminal justice. I I I I think to freeze the process right now, immediately before the community panel weighs in without giving them the opportunity to do their interviews is 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 just a mistake. Thank you for listening.
Is there any other commissioner who wishes to speak or has a question? Nancy and then Andrea. And then Kevin. Okay, we'll go in that order. Nancy?
Thank you, Doug. I'm surprised, maybe not surprised, but I have a very different take on our selection process. I am not impressed with the people and the depth of their experience, especially not with the people we have in the pool that we're looking at and their experience with respect to broad based community engagement. And that's the part that worries me the most, Patrick, is that we we might have to water down. What we really need is somebody who would handle what you've been doing and carry forward with it in community engagement. And that was the part that I felt was the most lacking in the people that we have been able to look at and vet so far. I I can see perfectly, not an insult to the community and the process at this point, but a realization that that Liz was pointing out, and that is that we need, we really do need two full time people to do this most important work. And my belief is that Charmaine personally needs a full time assistant because the job she's doing, setting up this commission and and all of the things that she's having to handle and juggle, I think she needs some help. So I still believe, even after listening to everybody, that we absolutely should bifurcate, and I think it should be done before we do our our interviews, because the point of the interview should be the point of the hiring and it should be two hirings instead of one. Thank you.
Andrea?
Yes, thank you, Doug. So I admittedly, I feel like I'm very late to this conversation. I I was not aware that there were even any issues with this process. However, after listening to everyone, I have two main concerns. One was already mentioned by Patrick, which is the budget. Of course, you can ask for a higher budget next fiscal year, but it's not guaranteed that that will be approved. And if you add a second role, it might go at the expense of other important roles. At the same time, and I think this is probably one of our largest concerns, is the the community engagement is a full time. It's a full time position. If you combine high level managerial tasks with community engagement tasks, I'm afraid the community engagement time will fall under and more time will be dedicated to, you know, what obviously are very important things that need to be set in place for this office to come up and be running and be functioning. So I I believe it is the community's primary concern that there is more engagement with the community, that community members are more aware of the commission. And we we have open meetings month after month and very few members of the public show up to our meetings or seem to take an interest, and that's not on them. I believe that probably has more to do with just Uh I believe that probably has more to do with just that lack of community engagement that simply has not been able to be incorporated as strongly into the work of the commission. And so um I can see book good arguments for both sides. But the way I sort of combine all of this together is to really say, community engagement is a full-time task. It requires the person to go out, be out in the community, talk to community members, attend community meetings. They're probably not going to be in the office all that much, and I just don't see how, if if we really want to seriously have somebody dedicated to this task, how that person can also meaningfully support the setting up of this office for the city. So um I think that also needs to be considered. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, so um I mean, there's just a few things I want to touch on. I mean, part partially it's the budget, but those things can obviously always be worked out. You could also argue that doing it now allows us to get, while we're in the mix of uh establishing a new legislative body from the beginning, to get approval now for that kind of position or role instead of later. Some of the comments that were made about, you know, the commission barely being able to do what it needs to do and stalling out, that's not due to the commission. That's, you know, city council has to do their part, obviously, in letting us allow, hire new people. But my thing is, once we have the twenty-two or twenty-three, I believe, commissioners in place again, and investigate independent investigators and all the other roles, at that point, that executive director is going to be very, very, very busy. If there's any indication by what Charmaine's done so far, I I don't see. I don't even remember a time when she's taken a break or a vacation, and I've been on this commission almost five years or four years. So uh that person's going to be extremely busy, and I don't think it's just filling in for vacations. You can't just step into a role. You have to be that role continually in addition to stepping in, and otherwise, how do you step into it, right? So I think it does take a very high-level managerial type of person and someone who has the tact and ability to navigate those same circles that Charmaine does. And in addition to that, um I also agree strongly that the person who would be doing outreach needs to be full-time. How how I I don't want someone who just, you know, posts some things online, retweets some stuff and, you know, visits certain events in certain areas. Sometimes that person should be everywhere throughout the city all the time, reaching everybody as much as possible to to take part in it. That's true community being involved in this process and with this commission, not just some community groups. I also think that uh some of the comments, you know, I don't believe that 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 this is Charmaine just not liking a particular set of people. I think that the it it's easy to say things like that when you're on the outside and have never been on the commission and never done the work of the commission full-time. But uh and those, it's it's not like those, you know, ideas aren't valid, but this is someone with a lot of experience who knows what it takes for a person to step into that role. And, you know, I wasn't on this interview committee, so I can't really speak to the the strength or lack of. But I know based on what the people here that have been have mentioned, that they didn't think that it was appropriate. But I do think that it would be strange to have outside people, again, not on the commission. There are some that are speaking for this process that have been on the commission, but others that are not to dictate who gets a role or who gets a job. That's the the people are appointed by districts to represent the community, right? So the community is present with these uh employees who are city officials, right? And they decide ultimately who gets these roles because they've done the job and know who should get the job. So that would be appropriate. We wouldn't ask a bunch of outside groups to hire managerial positions or or even assistants in other categories. As far as transparency goes, obviously, uh that should be number one, of course. But that's why we're here on the commission. That's why we're here as commissioners volunteering our time to review these cases. And at this point in time, we're also setting up an entire new legislative body with the hired city staff and city council and HR. So um I I just think that it it's wonderful that every, all these groups are involved, of course. But to 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 sit back and and, again, never have been in these positions, never fully understand all the inter- and 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 that goes for us, too. We can't say entirely what Charmaine does every waking minute. We get things prepared for us. We get reports and files ready for us. We review them and then make our decisions. They are doing the stuff twenty-four hours, seven days a week. On the other side, we don't fully know what's what's required, right? We can guess, but they fully do know. So they're the be, they're the people that should be making those decisions and deciding who gets these positions. And again, I just think the budget thing, that stuff always works itself out. And 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 again, the commission isn't only functioning poorly because we're doing a poor job. That's because you know, we can't get the required amount of staff. So that that I I I just, I really think it's important that it be two positions. There's only one person, I think, that could focus fully on the community and do an effective job at it. It would take the backseat to an executive deputy role, since that would be a person that is Charmaine number two, essentially, who has to step into that role and be able to do that. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other member of the uh commission who wishes to speak or has any questions? Seeing no hands raised, if you can put the agenda back up so I can read the motion. Okay, so stop it, okay? And so the motion is to bifurcate the the commission's deputy executive director position. So the recruitment is for a community engagement coordinator position and a deputy executive director position for the Office of the Commission on Best Practices. So that is the motion. So if you are in favor of splitting it into two separate positions, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to splitting it into two separate positions, you would vote no. And Andrea, your hand, what Kevin and not, Andrea, your hand is up. Did you have a question before we vote?
Yes, actually, apologies, Doug. I did have a question. So if the commission votes tonight to bifurcate the position, what would that mean in terms of what timeline are we looking at? Um what does that mean for those candidates that are currently in the review process? I would like to know a little bit more about what that looks like if the position gets bifurcated.
Okay, uh if it gets bifurcated, we would go and take a look at the the job description of both of the positions. And then we would proceed first with, as I indicated previously, the community engagement coordinator position. We would start over the search, um but anybody who who applied you know, for the current position, uh would be eligible to apply for the uh for the new position. Uh and there could be some people who applied for the current position who didn't make it to the first round, but who might make it to the first round if the the position was limited to community engagement. And so the answer is we would split the positions, we would develop a new job descriptions. We would do a new recruitment, a separate recruitment for each position, starting with the community engagement position. And then the timing of the uh deputy executive director position, I think we would need to discuss, uh so that we would have have a sense of uh, you know, whi- which of the positions is most important. In terms of timing, uh I think we would need to have it posted for thirty days. And we already have a lot of the work done, uh so it would be perhaps a shortened timeline, but we would have to wait thirty days. I anticipate that we would use the same process and probably the same panel uh to uh to interview the candidates for the community coordinator position. And we haven't discussed whether or not we would have a community panel for the deputy executive position. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Doug.
And then Nancy?
When we talked to Dave about it, he said they would advertise this for two weeks, not thirty days. So that would be only a a two-week re-advertising of it.
Okay, we we can, I I think we need to discuss that because I don't really gives us enough time to get qualified applicants there. So we 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 have to discuss that. So it would be somewhere between two weeks and thirty days, but that way. And we probably get some input from Liz on what the appropriate timeline would be as well. Uh Patrick is raising your hand.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I I I I want to make clear that people should not assume that the applicants for this position are just going to slide right over to the other one. This process, when a when a search gets canceled, it sends a message to applicants. I've seen that happen. I've done a lot of hiring, faculty and staff hiring. And when a search gets canceled, it sends a message. But more materially importantly, the salary is different. We're talking about a decrease from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is the current range, to about ninety thousand dollars for the coordinator position. So we should not assume that the people who applied for this position are just going to go ahead and from all over the country are just going to go ahead and apply for the, you know, as if it's the same job, but for thirty to fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, thirty to sixty thousand dollars less. So as, you know, just to be clear about that, I I don't think it's feasible to think that this, that all of the seventy-nine people are just going to slide right over to the other job.
Okay. So one more time, any questions or comments? Okay, and I've already explained what the motion is. And so Charmaine, if you could call the roll.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Dent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprouse?
No.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Delba Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Pink?
Yes.
First vice chair case?
Okay, the presiding officer doesn't vote unless there but would make a difference. And the vote is uh six to two, so the motion passes and the chair abstains.
And uh excuse me, Admiral Chair, can I say one thing? You actually do need a motion. You, the the thought was that the agenda specifies exactly what the motion is to be. One of you commissioners need to make a motion that specifies what's on the agenda so that we have a clear record as to who made the motion and seconded the motion. Then you need to take your vote. So I'm going to advise you just to revote. First of all, you need a motion, somebody needs to make the motion to bifurcate the position. You need a second, and then you need to revote. So the record is clear.
Okay, although I will correct you, the second, uh under Robert's rules, does not need to go into the minutes, mostly we're unaware of that. But anyway, the uh, so we do need a motion, so let's let's do it correctly. Thank you for pointing that out. I should have caught that. Getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. And so Nancy, do you want to uh?
Yes, I I move according to the wording in the in the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it, Ernestine.
Okay, and uh, sorry about this, but we need to repeat the vote. So Charmaine, can you uh repeat it for us?
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Dent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprouse?
No.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Delba Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Pink?
Yes.
And the chair abstains, motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and so that is all of our business for tonight. We will have a ad hoc transition planning committee meeting at our usual time on Friday at twelve-thirty. And in addition to continuing our review of the investigation procedures, we also will then discuss how to proceed with posting the the community engagement coordinator and perhaps have some discussion of the timeline of the other positions. So others who are interested in that are welcome to join us. And Nancy, your hand is still up. Is that because you didn't lower it? Okay, and then seeing no further business, and that is the only business permitted tonight, uh I will adjourn. I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Doug, for doing all you're doing. It's tremendous job you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
And all of you on on doing all of this.